Ms. Cassandra.
All right.
Good to see you.
Shirley, you want to do it?
I'm here.
You want to do it?
Yes.
Okay, let me call the meeting to order. Good morning, this is Wednesday, October fourteenth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and Councilman McGee is going to lead us in an invocation. What did I say? McGee? Oh, I was looking. Sorry Shirley, yes ma'am, please. I'm sorry.
Would you pray with me, please? Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for today. We thank you so much for waking us up this morning to start us on another beautiful day. Father, we come now asking you to bless our city, bless city council, bless our mayor, bless our citizens. Pray, Father, that the business at hand, that we will be able to do that with dignity and respect for all mankind. And Father, we now, we just come saying we thank you for all the blessings that you continue to shower down from above. We ask that you will continue to do that for us, do it for this city, do it for the state, and do it for our country. In Jesus' name we pray. And let my father's children say amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
And we have the minutes from the August twelfth and August twenty-sixth meeting.
The present.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now, we have awards. I believe Ed, you have to come up as Julie's working on the camera today, right?
Yes.
First staff has been taken out, yes sir. And so, this morning, Mayor and Council, we wish to, kind of on this first day of the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, which brings together the thousands of cities throughout this great state of Texas, to celebrate the work that we are doing, as well as to talk and plan for the future. On this day, they will be announcing those award winners for the Texas Municipal League Excellence in Local Government Awards. And so, the city of Tyler has received two of the, I believe it's either five or six of the municipal excellence awards that are awarded to cities over 25,000 in population. We are recipients of the Public Works Award for our work on Hillside Park renovations, and then also for the city communications programs for our Friendly Neighborhood Thief Program. And so, we are very, as far as honored, to be able to be the recipients of those. There'll be press releases that will be sent out with more details. There are pictures that we're able to take today, and you see the two awards before you. Essentially, we kind of look at this as the Oscars of city government awards, and so we are very honored to have been nominated and to have been able to be awarded such high esteem awards as these. And so, with that, sir, we just kind of recognize that and recognize your dedication and the direction that you have put this city forward, especially shows in relationships to the fields of our parks renovations that we have done with Hillside Park, which we were recipient for, and also for communications, especially in public safety, of working directly in ways, innovative ways in order to be able to address our citizens, so they can understand what responsibilities they need to take, what actions they can take to take care of themselves, and also what their police department and public safety units are out there doing on their behalf. And so, with that, sir, I just present these two awards to y'all. No action needs to be taken. One more, details to be sent out later today.
Super. And then we have eight, too. I think Kyle Keem is coming up. I will note that Councilman Don Warren, who's now running for mayor, was instrumental in Hillside Park. So, Don, thank you for all your work on that project. Hi, Kyle. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning.
The city of Tyler Planning Department has been recognized by the American Planning Association Texas Chapter for the 2020 Certificate of Achievement for Planning Excellence in recognition of the professional planning standards demonstrated by city planning staff and with the support exhibited by the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the sixth consecutive year that the city of Tyler Planning Department has received this recognition. Evaluation items that contributed to receiving this award include the completion of the Tyler First Five-Year Update, that's the comprehensive plan update, as well as the planning department staff completing qualified training, the planning commission also receiving training throughout the year, as well as the city council's support for ongoing planning initiatives. It is recommended that the city council accept the certificate of achievement for planning excellence from the American Planning Association Texas Chapter. And we did have a photo opportunity earlier, and the award is there on the desk, so.
Thank you very much. Congratulations for y'all's efforts.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kyle. George Roberts, P1.
Let's see here, do we have a little clicker? You give me a clicker. I'm just going to tell you to click, huh? Pardon?
Jennifer's doing it for me.
Jennifer's doing it for me.
Yeah, she's in another room, just saying next slide.
Next slide, she does it, okay. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing this morning?
Great.
It's a pleasure to be here again. I'm George Roberts with the Northeast Texas Public Health District here to give you an update on what's going on with COVID-19 in our community. The first slide I want to show you here is our dashboard from yesterday. And you'll see up there that we have 5,558 total cases in Smith County. Yesterday, we had 82 new cases. There's 2,081 active cases, 3,407 recovered patients, and 70 deaths. And what you'll see, and there's a little bit different, we've, where the, this is the wonky part of the presentation right here, you see the word confirmed and you see the word probable on there. What that means is confirmed is what has been what's known as a PCR lab test, meaning that that's a lab test out there, that's the test that we've been running pretty much from the start of this thing. The probables are what's called antigen tests, and those tests really started back in May or so, and it's a faster test, and you're seeing more and more people doing that. On the antigen test, if it hits positive, the reliability is good. But if it hits negative, the reliability is not as good. So, we basically are now combining the, we've had suggestions from the public to start adding those two together, so that's why you see that number confirmed and probable. So, the confirmed being 4,097, the confirmed being 1461, adding up to your total cases. That's the addition at the top there to do all that. As of yesterday, too, we also started adding up the confirmed and probables in the city counts and the death counts. So, you'll see a higher number there, so in Tyler now you see 4,170 cases and 44 deaths. So, again, that's the combination of the confirmed and the probable cases. And again, the state defines, we've had conversations with the state about this, the state asked us to list antigen cases as probable, so that's why you see the confirmed and probable categories there. But the main thing is, we treat now the probables as confirmed because we're doing the, we're counting those, we're doing contact tracing on them, and they're also going on the line list that goes out to our first responders on a daily basis. So, we've now been in this over seven months, believe it or not. Our first case was in this room, March thirteenth, 2020, Friday the thirteenth. So, where are we now? Well, whether we are tired of the virus or not, the virus is not quite tired of us quite yet. So, the virus is still amongst us. So, what do we need to continue to do? What are the things that we need to continue to do to try to protect ourselves and our community from this? And, you know, the first thing I always tell people is, stay home when you're sick. If you're sick, stay home. That's the best, that goes not only for COVID-19, but if you have the flu, a sore throat, whatever, we really encourage people to stay home when they're sick. Social distancing, that's a term that we've all come to know over the last few months, stay six feet or greater from each other. Three, when you're in public, wear a mask, mainly to protect others from you. I wear a mask to protect, basically protect Deb over here from me if I'm out in the crowd. So, that's more the protection is basically to protect other people. Fourth is, wash those hands often for 20 seconds or longer. Cover your cough and sneeze, keep your hands off your face and your eyes and your mouth. And right now, most important, get a flu shot. We, you know, we're, right now, we don't want to combine the flu and COVID-19, so get a flu shot as soon as you possibly can. I saw the numbers yesterday, we've given over 850 flu shots so far this year, and that's, we typically in our organization gives a little over 2,000 flu shots in a season. So, people are heeding that message right now and getting those flu shots, and I know several of you have already got that. I witnessed the mayor getting his the other day myself, so. So, I know the city and the county, I think everybody's getting their flu shots right now, and that's great. Again, the measures that I've been talking about are crucial to protect older adults and people with underlying medical conditions who are at risk for more difficult struggle with COVID-19 than our healthier population. So, we've talked about that a lot as well. So, now let me go through the charts that we've kind of started to show. So, this is some data that my, give credit to my epidemiologist staff, Jason Guest-Lewis in particular, for putting this together for us. So, the first slide there is your net health COVID-19 daily new cases in our seven county jurisdiction. So, you kind of see there that as you rise up, you go to, you know, June and July, you see those, we had a couple of big spikes there, and then it's kind of, seemed like it's kind of leveled back down to a certain level, although it's kind of, the numbers have kind of picked up a little bit here in recent days. Next slide. This is our net health active case rate of COVID-19 in our various counties. And you see right there, at Smith County, our numbers have gone up in there, we're 85.59 per 10,000 people right now. And again, that's an increase from when I reported the Commissioners Court two weeks ago. And again, this is based on there being a total number of 2,081 active and confirmed and probable cases as of yesterday. So, again, we're, you know, we've combined the confirmed and probable, our combined number now, total is 5,558, with a total of 3,407 recovered cases. Next slide. I'm going to come back to this a little bit later, but this is our rolling, yeah, there you go, our net health, seven-day rolling rates of COVID-19 by county, and you see our rate is 29, I'm sorry, 25.29, and that's 25.29 individuals per 100,000 people have gotten this per day, over, per 100,000 have contracted COVID-19 on a seven-day period. So, that's a kind of a daily rate of what's happening right now. Again, that number is up, again, from September 29th, when I reported, it was 15.84. That number is steadily going up. And again, I'm going to show you a different graph on that in a few minutes. Next slide is the net health COVID-19 case rates per zip code, and you see there, notice the high rates in the 75, 701, 02, 04, 06, 08, and 09 zip codes. Next slide. This is our COVID-19 crude attack rate per county, so this is basically the, so no, but that's, but basically it's telling us that Smith County, 238.8 individuals per 10,000 have contracted COVID-19 during our, during our time of doing this. Next slide. This is our net health COVID-19 transmission by race, ethnic in our seven county area. Again, like I've told y'all before, we don't always, the lab reports don't always tell us the race or ethnicity of the people, so this is what we know. So, according to this graph here, 52% roughly of our populations are white, have contracted COVID, 26.5 are Hispanic, 20.5 are African-American, and then .7 are Asian, and I think there's Pacific Islander in there, too. So, roughly, it's the, half of the folks that are being tested positive for COVID-19 are white. Next slide. This is our COVID-19, in Smith County, our deaths by race. We have 31 white individuals, 26 unknown, five Hispanic, and eight African-American. Next slide. And here's the deaths by, in our whole seven county area that we work with, again, mostly white, unknown 56, 21 black, 16 Hispanic. Next slide. And here's the age distribution. Again, we talked about the ages of people that are passing away from COVID-19, being older, and this bubble chart kind of shows you that. Again, the, if you're looking at the graph there, the blue dot, you see the smaller number, the blue dots are one people, are one person. 11 is our highest dot. Again, most of the people that have died in our area have been 65 and older, and you see a big spread there in the, it's kind of hard to see that graph at the bottom there, but 70 to 85 range roughly. There you go. Thank you for doing that there on the cursor. Next slide. Here's our age distribution. And again, this goes along with the whole discussion that we've had about the 21 to 30 crowd being our largest number of folks. Again, 1,020 in Smith County, and then you see the next group is going to be the 31 to, 31 to 40 crowd, followed closely behind by the 11 to 20 and the 41 to 50 crowd. Next slide. And that shows our whole net health, the same type of information there, except a little bit higher in the 41 to 50 crowd and 51 to 60 crowd, but 2,104 of our folks have been, in our seven county area, have been between 21 and 30. Next slide. So, to break that down just a little bit more, you see there the approximate school level. Roughly, you see the K through, the low numbers there and the pre-K, the K through five, six through eight, and then it really starts jumping up in the ninth through 12th, and then college, and that probably nobody is really surprised by that. But you kind of see that, it seemed like I got at the time, that we, we'll show you some other slides here, but as the children get older, they're passing the COVID-19 around a little more freely. Next slide. And this is the age and race of cases by approximate school age level. Hispanic in the ninth through 12th is the higher number there, white in the college age group, Hispanic in the, a little bit higher in the sixth through eighth, as well as the K through five. Next slide. And this is the net health COVID by age group, so the start there, the 106 is 14 years of age, the 118, excuse me, the 118 is 15, and then you see that number start to stair-step pretty quickly, with 16, 17, 18. So, the older, the older kids are passing or testing more positive than the younger kids for COVID-19, according to our information. Next. Here's the gender breakdown. Again, it's interesting, early on, if you remember, the, it seemed like more males than females were being tested positive for COVID-19, and now it's flipped. And pretty much in every, I think in every county, there's more, a lot more females than males that are testing positive, particularly Smith County, it's like 500 ahead right now. Next slide. And then the travel, you remember, early on, the travel was a big piece of this thing. We wanted to, early on, people had brought the COVID-19 into our community by virtue of travel, and now it's pretty much all community spread, as you'll note on the slide there. Next slide. So, this is the, this is the slide that I want to talk about. This is a little more of the detailed slide here. This is our, we call it our COVID-19 community spread level chart. If you recall, again, we talked about that our seven-day rolling rate right now is 25.29, which again, is an increase from our rate as of September 29th. So, right now, at this point, a trend is unclear, but if one exists, the explanation for the trend might be speculative. Nonetheless, this rolling rate is one of the best ways to closely monitor whether a trend over time is unfolding. It's either, we're either increasing, decrease, or flattening. It's a very rich chart that we just started displaying on our website last week. We spent quite a bit of time researching and checking on our own communities from previous trends, as well as best practices from other agencies, state, and communities. And Dr. McGahey, who's our health authority back here, he helped us with this as well. As we developed this guidance document, our guidance on the chart states that this graphic is only, in the small letters up there, as you can see, this graphic is only intended to provide situational awareness for organizations and entities, not as the sole indicator for decision-making in determining community spread, or to the safety of a specific organization, entity, or geographic mix. So, the levels are basically the, if it's zero to 10, zero, 10 or less, it's minimal, and that's yellow. The moderate range is greater than 10 and lower than 35, and the substantial is over 35. And you see the information that's listed in there as well. Next slide. And finally, if you want more information, nethealthcovid19.org is our website, and you can also click on, there's daily information. We post the dashboards Monday through Friday, they're refreshed every day. We put the hospital numbers in there as well, and we'll, we have lots of information in there, there's lots of information on our website if you're interested. So, maybe a couple of other items, and then we'll take questions. I know you have some questions for myself, or particularly Dr. McGahey. Contact tracing, we have 20 people that are helping us with contact tracing right now, which includes 12 of our staff, plus a number of individuals outside of Net Health. And again, I want to thank the staff with the city of Tyler, fire department, and police departments for their assistance with contact tracing. They helped us, they're helping us a little bit right now, but mostly they helped us big time, early part of this, early part of this effort, that we really could not have done it without them. Again, contact tracing is an essential piece of this effort to talk to people, encourage them to self-isolate, and not spread the virus. And we also seek to have the same discussion with their direct contacts, so they can self-isolate and not spread this virus. So, testing, testing has, you know, testing is the mayor will, shall we say, attest that was in short supply when we first started this thing. Getting a test was literally an act of Congress. Now, if you need a test, you can get it either from your provider. We also have a free testing site that will be set up, money, it's set up right now, Monday through Friday, from nine to four at St. Louis Baptist Church. We thank Reverend Ralph Caraway for allowing that to happen at his church, but that'll be there through October 30th, and we'll check and see where the next site might be after that. But that's been, we're seeing roughly 120, 130 people go through that testing site on a daily basis, so that's been very, very helpful. Symptoms, you remember, we first talked about this thing, the symptoms of COVID-19 were fever, cough, and shortness of breath. Well, then we've added a bunch of them, like difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle aches, headache, newly acquired loss of taste or smell, which is kind of, if I hear somebody tells me they've lost a taste or smell, that's a king-size red flag right there. Loss of appetite, sore throat, nasal congestions, i.e., that gets confused with allergies, doesn't it? Runny nose, diarrhea, vomiting, and nausea. So, lots more tests, so if people are concerned about, about having symptoms or something like that, again, the first thing we talked about is stay home when you're sick, but talk to your medical provider and get tested. Or if you just want to know what your status is, you may be asymptomatic, go to the free testing site. That is available for everybody in our community. Hospital update, we remain in communication with our local hospitals. You saw that number up on our dashboard that I showed you just a few minutes ago. We receive a dashboard daily, which tells us the number of positive and suspect COVID-19 patients in the Tyler hospitals, available ICU and hospital beds, ventilators, isolation rooms, and the status of their PPU supplies. And at this moment in time, the hospitals are busy, but they're able to care for those who need it. So, they've done a great job during this whole process of stretching themselves, surging where they need to, so they've done, it's been great. Schools have been on everybody's mind, and again, the schools have, they started on August 17th, and, you know, my staff and I have had a number of conversations with the school, how to handle positive cases. And when there is a positive case at school, the schools have been advised to immediately start the contact tracing process. And it's recommended that high probability contacts be sent home to quarantine for 14 days. So, schools report, anytime there's a positive case in the schools, they're reporting that to my staff and our office, but they also report it to the TEA on a daily basis, and the TEA reports, they update their numbers once a week. And I think that, you know, again, I applaud our whole community, our schools, our parents, everybody who have done such a great job of getting kids back to school, that actually has gone better than I thought it would. And the numbers, I think, you know, obviously there's been some timeouts for some football games, there's been some timeouts, there was a school in Lyndale that had to do a timeout early on, but overall, they've been, I think they've done a pretty good job with all this. And finally, again, thank you to the city of Tyler. Mayor Hines, we appreciate you, we appreciate Mr. Broussard, Chief Kobel, Chief Toller, Fire Captain Hal Walker, Jenny Wells, Julie Giggame, who've spent countless hours in emergency operations centers meetings, along with the added phone calls, texts, and emails, all hours of the day or night. There've been numerous other city employees in the fire and police departments that have given their time and energy to this effort as well, so a big shout-out to you guys for all your efforts. And finally, a shout-out to my staff, who has worked tirelessly during this team at Net Health, not only in COVID-19, but they've been there for our WIC clients, environmental health, TB control, immunizations, vital stats, and our Center for Healthy Living. And finally, thank you very much, and Smith County Health Authority, our new Smith County Health Authority is here today as well, so any comments that you want to make, Dr. McGahey, or any questions y'all might have for myself or Dr. McGahey?
I have a question.
Sure, please.
Forty-four deaths in the city of Tyler. I saw in print last week that nobody dies of old age anymore, and being on the higher end of that spectrum, that was a good thing to hear. But what I wanted to ask is, those 44 deaths, if they die in Tyler, in the hospital, are they counted as a Tyler death, or from where they came?
It's typically where they come from. If they live in Tyler, if they have a residence in Tyler, they're counted. Now, there's an issue with the death certificates. If somebody has died in Dallas, sometimes we may not know about that all the time, so there could be some gaps between what I'm reporting and what the other, but there's, the state has the number, maybe 20 more than what I have, so.
Well, I noticed, like, White House had one, and I just was curious.
Yeah, typically it's the city of residents.
City of residents?
Yeah, city of residents.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
I wanted to, I wanted to know more about the schools, because I get about three or four phone calls every single week about what's happening in the schools. And so, you mentioned that you contact trace once you find out about a student having it in the classroom, right? So, what are we doing to cleanse the classroom? What are we doing about all those other students that are in the classroom?
Yeah, so the schools are, the schools are taking care of that. They've got protocols to take care of that, Councilwoman, and they're, like I said, they've done a, they've done a terrific job. I checked their, I checked the TEA website for, just to get my numbers yesterday, and it was, I mean, the numbers that popped up, some, there's like their, Boulder popped up a little bit over the last week or two, but overall, there's, they've really done a tremendous job, and they've been pretty intentional about taking care of things.
One thing that I've learned during the process, Councilwoman, is that early on, there was, I don't think anybody in the country was ready for a pandemic, right? I mean, nobody. So, I think that what we've learned now is different organizations are taking care of their, their little spear of influence, right? Like, TEA has really done very good at coming up with the protocols and working with the state department of health to have those protocols for every location, and then on the nursing homes, for sure, we had a meeting with the regional.
Health and Human Services.
Yeah, I can't keep up with all the names and stuff, but whoever's in charge of all the nursing homes had probably a two-hour conference with all of us in the Emergency Command Center, where we, they went detail by detail exactly what they're requiring of each assisted living and nursing home, and what we, what we found is, those organizations have to answer already to some of these groups, and they have the ability to pull a license away. So, those private organizations, and the schools, for example, are responding very well to the regulatory agency at this point, and I, I think it's functioning really well. I think whenever there is an issue, the state of Texas really now has the resources that they throw at something. If they see, if there's a deficiency, they're really, they're really on the ball. I mean, I think everybody's ready now. We weren't ready in the beginning, but I think it's, it's working pretty well, and I really, I think the schools have done great. I thought it was going to be a lot worse, but the schools have just done a great job, I think, overall, in handling this issue. It's been impressive, I think.
Mr. Roberts, I do have a question, two questions, actually. What do you attribute, and the answer may be obvious, but what do you attribute the higher infection rates among females to?
I, that's.
What's the thought, the conversation?
Probably, I guess the social, I guess, I guess probably women may be a tad more social than the men are, might be one thing. I don't know, what do you think, Dr. McGahey?
That's, that's an excellent question. I don't know if I have the best answer, but a lot of the cases are driven by those who work in service industries that have to work when some of us can stay home. Maybe that's disproportionately women, I'm not sure, but it kind of, you know, it is an interesting phenomenon. That would be my, my guess at that, but we can get you some better information. That is kind of, and it's very interesting.
Because it really was interesting, because first it was men, predominantly men versus women, and then it just shifted over the last couple of months.
And you were correct in your statement, that people, that citizens are being proactive in getting their flu shots. Cindy and I got ours this last week, and we found that Walgreens and certain outlets that you can normally just walk in and get a quick flu shot, did not have the booster shot for the older population, of which I'm a part of. And so, I had to go to my primary care physician, so as we experience these shortages, do you expect that that supply will be filled quickly?
I think we will, and that's the special shot. I'm almost there, I'm right behind you, Councilman, so, but some.
I don't know what y'all are talking about. It's my birthday yesterday, but I don't know.
It's my birthday yesterday, but I don't know.
But some people need that special, it's kind of a supercharged flu shot, it has more of the antigen in it, and you're right, it's a little, it's been in short supply a little bit, but you can still find it. I don't see any shortage of flu vaccine in any category. You may have to search for that one a little bit more, though.
But just to reassure common citizen?
It is, it's out there, it's readily available, it is. I, I had my vaccine last Monday, took my two daughters to a local, to Super One to get their vaccine on Saturday afternoon, they had plenty.
Thank you.
And we have, we have plenty of the health, and we, we do have the high doses of Health District as well.
Good.
George, are they still using the nose swab? What, what method are we using now for?
They use the nose swab. I know at the, at the free testing site, they use an oral swab. Basically, you, when you go in, basically they take a Q-tip and they swab your, the, your cheeks, underneath your mouth, the roof of your mouth, do about a 15, 20-second swab and that's, that's the method there. Yeah, they're still using a nasal swab in some situations.
That's probably a good thing to publicize because I think a lot of people, they've heard the, the, it's like they sticking it to your brain, so that's what people.
Yes, those of us who've had that before.
I know, I, oh, I had it, believe me, yeah, so I would prefer those.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, it is.
They are migrating away from the nasopharyngeal swab, which goes all the way to the back of your throat, to the anterior narys of the front of the nose, the mouth, and increasingly to saliva. Saliva-based testing is more and more popular. I foresee in the future, it will be primarily saliva-based.
Right, for testing.
And obviously, that's an easier test, you hit it, you want somebody to, for a nasal swab, you kind of want somebody to know what the heck they're doing.
You're right.
You rupture something in there.
Yes, that's a concern there. So yeah, but the, the oral swab is very, it's, it's easy. I went and had it done a couple of weeks ago and, you know, I encourage you, I encourage you to go get a test.
Okay.
Check the system out. But again, we thank Reverend Caraway and St. Louis Baptist for opening up their church and we thank the Ci, the City of Tyler for the Tyler Senior Center for a month or so before that, so.
Any other questions? Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate you.
Now, we'll move to each one. Here comes Ms. Moss.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Regina Moss, on behalf of the Legal Department. We are here after a year of negotiations with Encore for the third and final public hearing of the Encore franchise agreement. The franchise was last adopted in 2010 and no changes have been made to the proposed ordinance since it was first presented or the last public reading on September 23rd. The details, of course, of the ordinance are in the council packet. The highlights are a 20-year term, it will still contain a two-part payment component including a municipal franchise charge and a discretionary franchise fee. With today's reading, we request that council open the third public hearing and at the conclusion of that hearing, staff recommends that council take action to vote to formally approve and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Any questions? We've gone over this several times. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm using the public hearing part of the council.
Oh, good, so I get to use this again? Thank you. We're opening up to a public hearing on H1. If there is anyone here that would like to come speak on that item, please feel free to do so. Cassandra, do we have anybody on the telephone?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing, and hearing that there's not anyone on the phone and no one's standing up to come visit, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion still stands.
Motion still stands, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Or one. Do we have any more public hearings where I can use the gavel?
Technically, don't have to use the gavel for a public.
I know, but it's almost over. We've got two more meetings.
You can use the gavel for any item you want.
Oh, don't tell me.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning.
You can't use the gavel at all.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Yes, me too.
This is a request that the Tyler City Council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the filing of one application with the East Texas Council of Governments for a regional solid waste grant and authorizing the acceptance and use of any grant if awarded, authorizing the acceptance of any increases in grant funding levels and authorizing the solid waste department to take all actions needed to receive and expend grant funds. If approved by Tyler City Council, the City Solid Waste Department and Keep Tyler Beautiful would apply for $700 in funding to purchase two new camera systems to assist code enforcement in tackling illegal dumping. According to the grant criteria, a resolution authorizing the application must be approved by the governing body of the applicant.
Great, so you're going for $700?
Yes.
Okay.
Not a big one this year.
Not a big one, well, good. Sure, if you get that. Any questions?
Move to approve our one.
A motion by McGee.
Second.
Second by McKeller, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank y'all.
Well, thank you. Or two. Renissa.
She's coming.
Ms. Harris. Anyone with any questions?
I won't pull in five if you don't hurry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Mr. Manager. I'm Renissa Wade, Managing Director for the City of Tyler. I'm before you today requesting you to adopt a resolution ratifying the acceptance of the Routine Airport Maintenance Program Grant. This grant is received every year, we've received it since 2012. This grant is used to do routine maintenance around the airport, including signage and painting. It is a 50/50 match. The total amount of the program is $100,000. The $50,000 match is currently budgeted in our operations budget at the airport and I request that you adopt the resolution and accept the grant.
Questions?
Move to approve our two.
Motion by McGee, a second by Sellers, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Good morning, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Dustin Wilson, I'm the CDBG Manager for the city. M1 is a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Habitat for Humanity to administer a critical home repair program. This program is part of the Program Year 2020 Annual Action Plan funded through the Community Development Block Grant. And this program is, is designed to expand the supply of decent, safe and sanitary housing for low to moderate income households. It helps correct health and safety hazards and deteriorated housing, extends a useful life of existing household units and it protects the owner occupant from dangerous conditions. Now, this particular program, we've actually been doing for, I believe, about a year and a half now, and I do have Mr. Raymond Gideon with Habitat here with me today, if y'all have any questions for him. But on the program, it is limited to owner occupied housing and low to moderate income households. Repairs are capped at a hun, or $10,000, $10,000 per household and luxury items and luxury repairs are not eligible. So, you know, we're not going to build a pool or anything like that. You know, we're repairing these code violations, thing, or providing better access for disabled or the elderly. And for this particular program, the repairs will be $150,000. There is an administrative fee paid to Habitat totaling $15,000. So the total budget for the program is $165,000. And as I indicated earlier, it is all funded through the CDBG.
And this is, it's, it's based on a criteria of what is the most needed project, not based on first come, first served?
Households do apply.
Right.
And I do have Mr. Raymond Gideon with Habitat, he could probably answer, they, they handle all of the applications and processing those. And Mr. Gideon, if you could come up? He, he would be able to better explain how they process those applications.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we maintain an ongoing list of applicants that, you know, because I have different grants for different people and stuff, but I have the ability, if it is an emergency situation, that I bump people up.
Right, right.
If it's an emergency repair.
Right, because I think it's, I, I'd rather it not be like first come, first served, but actually go to the most needed individuals.
Yes.
Our homeowner.
Yes.
Okay, that's all that I have. Thank you so much for being here.
All right, thanks.
That answered my question. Any other questions?
No, for me.
I'll entertain a motion for M1. Do we do M1 and M2 at the same time? Can I do that? Deborah says yes, so I'll entertain a motion for M1 and M2. So moved by Ms. McKeller, second by Westbrook, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. M3, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Lisa Crossman, City Engineer. Item M3 is a request for a construction contract for the Cambridge Road Improvements Project. As you know, we've had the design for this project underway for the last couple of years. The design was recently completed and we publicly advertised for bids and bids were opened on September 29th. We did receive three bids. The low bidder was Reynolds and Kay and the low bid for the asphalt street option, which staff does recommend that we go with, is just under eight and a half million dollars. The project includes expanding the pavement width, which would mean that Cambridge Road will have two lanes of traffic plus a dedicated center turn lane. We're also making some traffic safety improvements in the way of installing stop signs at two of the intersections along the project route. We're also going to be adding curb and gutter, sidewalks and storm drain system through the entire length of the project. We'll also be replacing a 12-inch water line, addressing some drainage issues in the Oxford area neighborhood to the west of the project, as well as making some minor intersection improvements at the intersection of East Heritage at Broadway.
Right.
So I do also have representatives from the Brandon Corporation who provided the design for us, if you have any specific questions.
Well, this, this is a project, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're, we're getting there. This project's been on the books a long time and Councilman Nix, who is no, no longer on the council, but has, has worked many, many years on this and it's a great project. Long time coming, but it's really needed in that area, so I appreciate staff. Lisa, y'all sticking with it over these years to get this ready to go for that district? I think it's something that's, time has come, thank you.
So just for clarification, Lisa, this does include the Oxford piece?
Yes, yes, sir, it does.
It addresses the drainage issues completely in that area?
A lot of, a lot of work to be done right there.
A lot of work.
A lot of work, that's, yeah. Any other questions?
Funding for this project?
It will be funded through the half cent program.
Okay. The only, I think that we've seen some of it, Mr. Mayor, where the possibility that it'll also impact the funding on the Rose Garden Master Plan and so on, too, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've looked, looked at that, right? On how the cash flow works, I mean, that could be a question for, Ed Broussard, you want to answer that?
I can't, I'd like to, but Lisa's.
Lisa do it, okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, originally, I had the funding for that project scheduled in one single fiscal year and that's not really a reasonable forecast. So once I actually modified the forecast to a more reasonable timeframe, it actually opened up the funding to cover this project. So there are going to be no budget issues within, within the program.
Yeah.
What was the original estimate based on the eight, no, you didn't came out?
Brandon estimated the project at around six and a half and then, of course, the low bid was just under eight and a half.
Yeah, but some of that was, some of these items were added to it.
That's correct.
Over time, right?
The, the Oxford drainage area was added as additional work and then the intersection improvements at Heritage was also added as additional work.
And Oxford was about a half million?
Yes, ma'am, just a little over a half million.
If you have something I want to hear.
Mr. Breedlog for Brandon, you want to answer that question?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we did add, as any other project, we kind of get into things and add and add and add, you know, but we did add some improvements to East Heritage to widen, so we'd get a turn lane there. As we go into construction on this, we're going to be adding a lot of traffic to that intersection. And right now, there's only one lane that was sharing right, left and straight. So now there'll be a dedicated right there, so. That was something that came up in one of the public hearings, that they requested we fix that intersection a little bit to try to help out. We're going to do that early in the project so that they get the benefit of it right away. And then, and then, of course, Oxford in there. As far as the prices, we've been seeing prices really push the last few months. There's a lot of work out there. I was a little surprised we didn't get more bids on this as well, you know, so you're seeing a lot of people with a lot of work out there, you know, contractors with a lot of work, so.
Right. But. Yeah, but I don't think we were at the, also at the turn, I don't think we were anticipating as much drainage work there when we first started either.
Right. It's, it's a major drainage project, there's a, lots of pipe in the project, our pipe prices have really pushed the last six months.
Right.
It's, it was kind of a combination of a lot of things that pushed the price up. It's not just, if you look through the bid tab, you know, we've got 100 bid items in there. So we, they're up and down everywhere, but up in lots of places. We've got a good contractor, they work well with us. It'll be a good project. It, it's about 22 months of work.
Right.
So that'll help with the budget to spread it out over a couple of years.
Right.
Half cent.
Any other questions?
I move to approve M3.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you all very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tiffany Curry, Utilities Engineer in Tyler Water Utilities. M4 is the Amendment to the Engineering Services Contract for KSA for the Consent Decree Group Two work. A quick refresher, next slide. Group Two remediation design included manholes in Basins Eight and Fifteen, gravity mains in Basins Thirteen. The design of the manholes is complete and the construction is almost complete. The gravity main, go back one slide real quick. The gravity main, designed for the traditional and specialty remediation, is complete and those packages have been awarded to two contractors. And then you can see on the next slide, Basin Thirteen is where we will be doing this additional gravity main work. The work that's included in the additional services for Group Two is rerouting of approximately 9,500 linear feet of gravity main. These are segments that were identified as needing remediation and they're located under homes or residences, buildings, so we can't open cut them. The intention is that we would reroute these lines. We hope to be able to stay in existing easements and right of ways to minimize easement acquisition. The design services include gravity main design, the bid phase services and construction phase services, just as with our other contracts. The estimated construction cost of this reroute project is $2,536,000 and the additional engineering phase services is $486,700. The recommendation to the council today is that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with KSA engineers for additional design and construction phase services for consent decree group two remedial measures, implementation in the amount not to exceed $486,700.
Any questions?
No, move to approve M4.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to the board appointments. Cassandra, do you want to come up and do it? I mean, we're not doing the absentee sales tax, right? Okay, good. We're going to do the reappointments after the November election. Are you looking at me?
Um.
Okay, good.
Okay, sorry. Hello, I'm Cassandra Braeger, City Clerk. Uh, August of, uh, twenty-sixth, I brought half the boards to you, uh, for appointments. Uh, this time, I'm bringing the other half that I received applications for. So in front of you, you should have the Animal Care Advisory Board, we have two positions to fill, we only received one application.
So, we'll all entertain a motion to appoint Michael Maris to the board.
So moved.
Uh, motion.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, Civil Service Commission, one position to fill, one application, and the, uh, when they're in red, that means that they would like to be reappointed to the board.
You mean if they're in yellow? Oh, red updated, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this shit, I apologize. Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion for Steve Brown to be appointed.
Move to approve Steve Brown, Civil Service.
Motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by McGee, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, Disabilities Issues Review Board, five positions to fill, four applicants.
So, we have a slate with Shore, Lane, Rice, and Voice, correct?
Yes.
Do we need to appoint a chair to this, Mr. Mayor?
Do we?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move to approve Disability Issues Review Board, the, for people who are.
Motion by Sellers, a second by McKeller, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Industrials Development Corporation, one position, uh, two applicants, and Cynthia Pickney would like to be reappointed.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve Ed Cynthia Pickney back to the Industrial Development.
Motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by McKeller, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Library Board?
Three positions, three applicants to be reappointed.
Move to approve the Library Board?
Second.
Motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Medical Revolution Board, uh, three positions, two applicants, and Mr. Hart would like to return.
Um, I'd entertain a motion to appoint John Barnett, reappoint him as the chair, and for Kevin Hart and, um, Henry to be reappointed?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Historical Preservation Board?
Three positions, one applicant, and, um, Vicky Betts is already on the board as a member of the Smith County Historical Society, but she would like to be a, a regular member.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve Historical Preservation Board.
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, a second by Sellers, all in favor of Ms. Betts?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Parks Board? Four positions, many applicants, six applicants.
Right.
Three would like to be reappointed. So there will be Orenia Mason, Brittany Childs, Shawana Flowers, and Lisa Walker, they would like to be reappointed to the board, so we would just need one more.
Well, that's, well, you just said, you just read four names.
Three, I need one more for.
Oh, but is it Orenia Mason, Brittany Childs, Shawana Flowers, and Lisa Walker?
Oh, I missed her up there, sorry.
You did.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm on top of it, I'm, it's okay. So, I'd entertain a motion for Orenia Mason, Brittany Childs, Shawana Flowers, and Lisa Walker to return to the board.
Move to approve.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
And I will be in the.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
And we skip the absentee sales tax until after election, is that what you said?
Yes, yeah, so y'all can do it after the election.
Any information, uh, requests and applications, cityclerk@tylertexas.com, or go to our website, uh, citoyoteller.org, or nine oh three five three one eleven oh six.
Cassandra, you did a great job. All these years, you were always nervous about coming up there, and you were always telling me not to have you come up front, but you did an excellent job.
I appreciate you.
So, thank you. Uh, yes.
He's on his way out.
Yes, we did, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we did pull item M5. Um, and so now, we're down to the consent agenda. See, I'm trying to get us out here in an hour, because last meeting was four and a half, I believe, so.
Right, it was.
Um, do, I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, you didn't hear me, I was talking.
Second.
Uh, uh, motion by McGee, a second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. City Manager Report, you have three minutes.
Let me talk fast, then.
I'm going to hit the gavel.
All right, Mayor and Council, um, few items of note, uh, the Census Bureau has officially announced that the census will end tomorrow, um, at the end of the day, um, and it has been something where we take a look at to see what is our rate, and just for your information, for this very last, last-minute push, um, we are having, we currently have a response rate of sixty-two point one percent, um, in Tyler, and that was, was of Monday, which is below the statewide rate of sixty-two point six percent, and well below our two-thousand-and-ten self-response rate of sixty-six point one percent. So that is still something of which, like I said, it's, we're down to, you know, a little over twenty-four hours, uh, to continue a push, but if you know of someone who has not yet completed, or if there is a message and push that you can put out there, um, we are kind of down to the wire now.
Now, the count is the count, Mr. City Manager, correct? There will be no adjustments?
There, the count is the count, but I don't want to say that there is no adjustment, so there is a way to appeal, and, uh, I believe in the past, we have, uh, looked at that to see if we feel that there is an undercount that is there. Um, that's then where we rely upon, I think Heather is in the back there, we rely upon quite a bit of the information from planning and GIS, uh, that we can try to be able to show and make a, um, presentation on why we believe there is an undercount that is there. Usually, that appeal process is very well detailed out, um, and so we'll see kind of of how that appeal process is put forward, uh, if we feel that there is a, a wide undercount that has been done for Tyler.
Well, thank you for your appeal, also too, for those that haven't registered to register.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, good news, um, as we went through this council meeting, you didn't hear any whistles, um, and so the downtown railroad quiet zone has been reinstated officially, uh, by Union Pacific. By law, locomotive horns are required to sound fifteen to twenty seconds before entering all public grade crossings with a horn pattern of two long, one short, and one long sounding horn. Uh, quiet zone eliminates the sounding of this horn pattern at the grade crossings between Duncan Street and Elm Street, uh, through downtown. However, if locomotive operators observe that they perceive to be unsafe conditions, they may still sound their horn as needed. Uh, one of the things we had that taken away from, we had installed for the quiet zone, but then removed as Union Pacific came through, they had changed some of their criteria, so some drive patterns or approaches, uh, were then too close, and then also a sidewalk had been constructed that then, uh, kind of violated the quiet zone piece, so we've worked with Union Pacific to make some changes where needed, um, and be able to get that to where it has now been reinstated, but we still, uh, as far as make sure for all people, pedestrians, uh, vehicles, to still be vigilant as they cross railroads, as that is a, uh, very dangerous, uh, time, anytime you are crossing a railroad, especially one as active as this one. The Rose Garden is officially rose season, uh, the Rose Garden has started to bloom, and we're seeing lots of visitors, as well as getting several phone calls from tourists trying to plan events. Uh, the garden should be in full bloom for the next two weeks, weather permitting. We also recommend that for people coming to Tyler, or even for those here in Tyler